Okay, it's 5:30 PM and I call this administrative meeting of the city council about our award. If everyone will put their phones on silent and you will also remember to sign in at the back of the room. So at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. John Call. There he is, to present the Klonas Club Christmas Parade Awards.
So I know it's February. Just a calamity of things, our six children's and children's day, we were being at the funeral home. But we are doing it tonight. This year, we did a little different. This is my first year being in charge of the parade. Mr. Jordan McCleary kind of stepped back. He was helpful, but I was actually in charge. Well, Starla, Reeve, and Heather, they were in charge of it. I just kind of guided them along. But we had a very good parade this year. We had, I believe, 107 interest, Starla. And then Director Wors told me that the City of Montgomery only had nine and six in there. So we did very well this year. One thing that we did look different this year, few places in funeral home is giving a cash prize for the first, second, and third place winners. The first place winner is getting $150, second place is getting $100, and then the third place is getting $20. So that's just a little bonus. Trying to make it more interesting, getting more participation, and obviously something more, but we had a big parade this year. So Heather, if you'll come up, Starla, Klonas Club members, we'll go ahead and, then we have some here. Les, it's the president. We want him over here, yeah, out front there, so we'll get everybody together. So the, I guess, so the third place goes to... So the third place goes to Keith Hardy, Hardy's Asphalt Gaming. Keith, if you'll come forward. He had the radio flyer car, if y'all remember. That was just me. I don't know where he got it from, I don't know. But we thank you for your participation and the creativity that you did. Les, if you'll come over and get a picture made with me, right there, I'll let y'all, Heather, right there, Starla. Okay, so Nick, the Klonas. Second place goes to... Second place winner goes to the Ozark Chamber of Commerce. They had a very nice float, I think Rosemary said there were several members that worked on that float, you know, to make it what it was. So come on up, Miss Rosemary, Susan Jewett. Two very good ladies, very active ladies in our community here, so we're going to let you have that. And that, right there, so, all right. Okay? And then the first place winner. The Ozark Indian Electric Company, you'll come forward. They always do a great job. You know, I'm always embarrassed when I see their float compared to ours. Because they are very creative and do a very good job. So thank you for what you do. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John, and Les, and all the members of Klonas, and Heather, and everyone who worked really hard to put on a wonderful Christmas parade for us this year. At this time, we're going to review the agenda for the 5:30 PM meeting. So after a call for prayer and allegiance, we're going to review the minutes for the regular council meeting that was held on February 6, 2024. Council members, have you had a chance to review those minutes? Do you have any comments or questions about them?
No.
Okay. Great. Item number five is a first and second reading application, 050 Retail Beer Off Premise Only and 070 Retail Table Wine Off Premises Only for the applicant 101 Smart, Smart 101E, trade name Beeline 101, at 1412 St. Perdille Road. Captain Niles, would you like to come up and speak on those for us?
What do you think? So speaking of the first one, Beeline 101, there's nothing that we have found that would prevent them from obtaining the license. They did have one civil case back in 2019, unknown what the case was regarding, however, they've been resolved.
Thank you. So you recommend it for a first and second reading?
Correct.
All right, I had a feeling, just a moment, because item number six is the first reading application, 040 Retail Beer On or Off Premises and Table Wine On or Off Premises for the applicant 231 Seafood House, under the trade name 231 Seafood House. So what about that one?
Once again, no objection. We found no reason to, we're hoping for obtaining the license.
And the reason that we have to do just the first reading is because of the new location, correct? That's the reason, is because they're doing a relocation. Okay, so council members, do you have any questions for Captain Niles on either one of those agenda items?
Captain, that first one, it does a name change more or less, right?
Owner and name change.
Thank you.
I have a question. So the second one, it's on or off premise? They're gonna, how does that work?
On or off premises?
For the 231 Seafood?
So that, like an outdoor venue?
Oh, like in the parking lot or something?
They would not be allowed to park.
They can't take their beverage with them in the car, so I just don't understand why it's off premise. What does that mean?
I would have to look into that. That's what all licenses, they all say that.
Well, the beginning, the first one is a package store or something, that's off premise, only like a wholesaler or retailer. But the second one, so are they, maybe they're going to sell by, by the bottle or something?
It's quite possible, like you said, like a package store, obviously that's an off premise only.
Yeah.
Dining facilities.
Right. I just wanted to understand with being a dining, why they would be off premise?
We can find that out in the next meeting before it comes up for a second reading.
Okay. We can find that out, we can find an answer out before the next meeting for the second reading. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Item number seven is to set a public hearing for March 5, 2024, at 5:00 PM for the rezoning of parcel number 26060423000003. Dot 006, located on Marley Mill Road, Ozark, Alabama. Brett, can you come and speak to us on that one, please?
It currently is on, I think, I-1, H. Ball property in the city. It wants to chase up our eggs because he's trying to put a home in. Clearly, you can't do that on I-1.
Council members, do you have any questions or any additional questions for Brett on the rezoning of this property?
Yes, there was a home there previously. That home?
No, that was right in the corner. And that got torn down.
Yeah.
It was never home there.
Well, what was it?
A piece of vacant block.
But it's not spot on, because it...
No, 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 it backs up to an R. H.
Right, right. I was just thinking that there was already had a little, a little tiny little house that was right there, and we actually tore it out.
No, no, not right there.
It's not right there, it's in, okay.
And yes, council members, if you look at your map, it is R. H. all around.
And that says, to be resolved from that key.
Any, do we have any additional questions for Brett on that one? Thank you. All right, thank you, Brett. Oh, no, we have, not the next one, just the, okay. Item number eight is the ordinance repealing section 5.1 for the technical codes adopted by reference and exclusions deciding disputes on chapter 5, article 1 in general code of ordinances with the City of Ozark, Alabama, and replacing section 5.1 with technical codes accepted by reference exclusions deciding disputes in its entirety. So would you like to speak on that one?
Pretty much every three years, you put, update your codes. And we are still in 2019, so I like to, though it's 21, which is the current code.
Council members, does everyone understand what he's talking about? I know that a lot of us have gone through the class, what we learn about the codes and how they have to update every, every two years. So replacing 2019 with the 2024s.
2019, yes.
Wait. All right, any questions for Brett on updating the ordinances? Thank you so much. Item number nine is to request the use of reserve funds for the additional cost of Ozark. Ozzy, if you'd like to come speak to us on that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to call and request an additional $150,000 to update the sound and stage for the civic center. This price increase was due to a difference between the original quote and the quotes provided when Alabama power closed the agreements with the vendors. From the sound quote, there's a $38,000 difference. From the stage quote, a $20,000 difference. And then through the process, you was seeing that we needed to add the light conditioning, which costs $54,000. Bring the new total to $397,284. The budgeted was $247,189. So I'd like to request the additional $150,000 for us to get to complete this project at the civic center.
Okay, council members, do you have any additional questions for Ozzy on the additional, or the additional use of funds, the reserve funds, to fund this project?
Can help for a little with the crack right there?
The lighting portion has been completed. If you guys haven't been to the civic center the last month or so, please do, because it's a brand new place, it looks Friday day. The air conditioning units, the six new 40-ton air conditioning units will be delivered in March. And then if it gets approved, you'd like to get this portion started as soon as possible, that we can have a brand new facility. And I think this is our legacy to, you know, to our future generations, allowing people to come for our pageants, graduations, and whatnot at the civic centers. You know, if you have the money available, we should invest in providing that to our, our community.
I want to add this about the sound. If we do the sound system, it should be the most sophisticated sound system of anywhere in the Whitegrass. Matter of fact, they talked about they want to feature it in some magazine. If y'all recall, when you're sitting on the stage at graduation, everybody in the audience can hear everything, you can't hear anything. I mean, it's, it's really bad. This system corrects all that. You'll be able to hear equal sound throughout the entire civic center.
Yeah, we'll have sound engineers come and measure everything and see like the sound rebound and everything that we have to, to like first grade. So if we allow this to happen, the civic center is going to be the best facility, the best concert house in the Whitegrass.
Make it easier for everyone.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That brings me to my next point. I don't know if you can speak on that now or if I should be waiting, so.
Just wait.
Okay, cool.
All right, and then. Thanks for that reminder, Chris. But I do have a question, Chris, do we have enough in reserve for that?
Well, we're spending a million eight, so I don't know where another $100,000 is going to go.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ozzy.
Thank you.
Okay. I view, council members, because we have the hearing right before this, I know that we do need to add the, whatever the decision will end up being on that hearing for the revocation of the business license. So we do need to add that as an agenda item? And that would be item 10? And I'm requesting an item 11 of an executive session for pending litigation. Item 11? Yes. And I'll double check with our attorney, pending litigation is the, the reason that we can go into executive session.
Pending litigation is a stated reason to put allowing executive sessions.
Thank you, thank you. So now, at this time, I will go out to our department heads in attendance. Do we have any department heads that have any questions or concerns on any of the agenda items this evening? Okay, do we have any of them? Oh, department heads? Oh, well, that would be, like. I'm going to call you up in a second, Ozzy. He was looking out for you there.
Thank you.
So Ozzy would like us to speak on the non-agenda item, so just a second, okay? Do we have any comments from the floor on any of the agenda items this evening? Do we have any comments from anyone regarding any subject in particular? Ozzy, if you would like to come and speak on yours at this time.
All right. So thank you for your attention. I would like to, may I set this somewhere? This, try to go to visual meeting number one. Sorry, buddy. I'll have a check with you guys and I'll, I'll change to the other screen. All right, so I have been working with Councilwoman Leah Arlo and some community leaders to bring a Kid Zone Stigall Park ADA playground. We want to add some ADA components to Kid Zone. We're talking about getting some ADA inclusive swings, where can the parent can move the child from the wheelchair to the swing set. Getting a surface spinner which is level to the ground, that way the wheelchair can be, will be straight to the apparatus here. Getting this cover, it's a 25 by 25 cover that will cover this whole, the whole area where the swings are. And then getting this multisensory instrument series, where kids from all different levels of ability and disabilities can use this. Leisure Services does not have the money to fund it. That's the goal that we have. We are using, or we're asking the community to help us fund this project. I have drafted a letter. Councilwoman Leah Arlo has seen the letter, has approved it. I'd like to start sending the letter to local businesses to ask for their, their help and seeing how close we can get to this number two. Ideally, be able to get this, this playground for us. Showing everybody, we're working on getting an ADA compliant playground for the city of Ozark. That way, children with all ability levels can enjoy our facilities. So that's number one. I might give more time, sorry. We're very excited to report that Mr. Jeff Foxworthy is coming to the Ozark Civic Center on March 14 at 6:30 PM. Tickets are available through Eventbrite. If you guys log into Eventbrite, you go to, what is the name of the thing here?
Learning to Live While You're Dying.
It's Jeff Foxworthy's Humor and Hope Show. Once you click on there, you just click on the tickets, how many tickets you want, tickets are $5, first come, first served. Only 3,200 tickets available, so go grab yours as quick as you can. So that's thing number two. Thing number three. Let's see. I know, right? Thing number three, I would like to change our leisure services department back to Parks and Recreation. Using the city logo that the city has just approved, just changing from City of Ozark to Parks and Recreation. The Alabama Recreation and Parks Association is the entity which governs what we do. So I'd like to follow suit, like most of the cities around Alabama, and change back to Parks and Recreation. When we looked into the city records to see if we could do this, apparently, Chris, please help me out if I'm wrong, but the name has never been changed from Parks and Rec to Leisure Services. So technically, on the books, we're still, yeah, so. As she was just informed, they're going back to Parks and Rec. And if you guys are okay with it, we'll get that going.
Thank you for making us aware.
That's, that's what I'm here for. And I think that's it. So thanks for your time. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Ozzy. Are there any, are there any public, from anyone at the floor, any concerns or comments on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am? Oh, Mitchell, sorry?
No, you go ahead.
Oh. I'm sorry. I'll call on you next. I'm not even.
It's kind of funny, the park was mentioned, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here, the park over here at Kid Zone.
Can you say your name for us?
I'm sorry. Kevin Jones, I live on Warren Park Road.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You can find.
But the park over here at Kid Zone, it was rebuilt a while back and it looked really nice, and it still does to a certain extent. But there is damage that is going on at the park. There's boards I've came across that were kicked out by kids. And it's not kids' fault, it's parents, you know, raising them wrong, and, yeah, I mean, I don't want to get into that, that's, that's another thing. But it's starting to fall back into disrepair. And years ago, I know my wife wasn't, I'm sure there's other people that were complaining, that when there was just nothing but a wooded park, playground park, that it was disrepair to begin. So I don't know. I'm not trying to be disrespectful or rude, but it's not, there's no attention to it right there, because there's certain things that are going on. There's a piece loose on playground, the fence is open where they kicked it open. One of the other wooded things, you can climb down inside of it, where there's not supposed to be a way to get down into it. The women's bathroom has been closed apparently for a week or two now. There's two stalls.
Yes, someone set it on fire.
Yeah, all that's, that's truly understand.
So I will, so, I will say, Ozzy, so, hey, Ozzy, our parks in rec, your parks in rec. So typically, you could, you could put all of those notifications into one of the forms online, and it would go to Ozzy on it.
I would, I'm trying to figure out how to say this and not be disrespectful to all people here, but there, there needs to be a way to hold people accountable that break the park. There can't be always an officer there, or, I hate to be kind of, kicking doors in my office, all with our own eyes. So, you know.
Did you report it at the time?
I guess, this was a while back in the past.
So that's the only way that you can see.
Yeah, well, I mean, the boards have been laying around, and I thought, well, maybe someone come by and see him. I was like, I've seen him there for a while. I picked him up and moved him. And I'm sure whoever, I put him in front of the bathroom, so people in the bathroom can see him. It's, that's what I'm, you, you would think someone to come by and, well, I mean, they've been mowing the grass and all that, or, you know, taking care of a hemp lawn, no one has said anything. And that's what's bothering me, and our kids are our future, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
But I'm also concerned about Jones Road over here. Ever since I've moved up there with my wife, it's been patched, and patched, and patched.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Brittany Allen. I live at 3215 North Union Avenue here in Ozark. I'm here again in my capacity as DA Smith PTO Vice President. And I'm just here to remind the city council and anyone in attendance about our shoe drive, our shoe drive-through fundraiser this Saturday. It's this Saturday, it's going to be a straightforward, follow the cones as you come into DA Smith Middle School Campus. It's going to be set up right there. We're going to be right there in front of the gym. Just drop either a handoff of your donation of new, used, or gently worn shoes, and, or just pop your trunk and allow a volunteer to get them out for you. This is a really great fundraiser that everyone can participate in, because almost everyone's got some shoes that you don't wear anymore in the back of your closet. So we're just inviting everyone, instead of cleaning out your wallet for DA Smith Middle School's school campus enhancement initiative, clean out your closet instead. You can bring them to us on Saturday, February 24, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then you can head back downtown and enjoy the chili cook-off.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else mentioning this that has any public, yes, ma'am?
I just had a question, I guess this may be, I see, of the city council. How and why was a decision made to make Stigall Park ADA? And will any consideration be given for some ADA equipment for both Police Memorial and F.R.?
Okay, so that would definitely be a question for Ozzy. I would just encourage you to, to get with Ozzy on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Or is there any other comments or questions from the floor? Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Whitcomb. Of course, you know about that. We own and operate the dog pound across the street. I am here to inquire to see if anybody has gone over the reasons for the cost of the business license if that has been reviewed.
We have reviewed it. At this time, we are not considering changing the, it is not on, it is not an agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from anyone on the floor? So with that, I will go to final comments from the mayor.
Okay, I have thought that our EMS legislation will be dropped in the House tomorrow, so I hope to get that passed fairly quick. The 231 Cold Wash Project and the USDA building, Brett's going out there and inspect those puddings in the morning and hope to get up those forward. We're waiting on bleachers that are ordered for Eastgate School to finish that project up. The sewage project at the old lorry at the Parker Drive, they're ready to start there, they're just waiting on some of the material to come in. The $1.4 million access road that we have on 231, the utility work that had to be done there that we did not expect. There was some cost overruns. We'll be bringing that to y'all at the next meeting to approve that. The Holden House project, where we're doing the 30 by 60 slab in the back. Because of the drastic elevation change, we built a second retaining wall. We had most of the block, we needed to do that from the previous wall, but we did have to order a few more. But if you haven't been by the look of that, you need to really go check that out. The Bell Hall property, we did have an offer on that, bail countered back, and we're waiting to hear on that. But we feel real, feel real good about that. We'll be worked out between those two people. The brochure you have in front of you is the employment brochure that we put together. We are in the process of trying to work with all the high schools in the county to try to get in front of those juniors and seniors. And if you, you know, take some extra time to look at that, it's, it's very, it's, it's written in a way they can understand it. Talks about all of our benefits and opportunities to come and work with the city right now, so, you know, that they can be in school one day and, and start in, in some of those positions as high as $33,000 a year the next day. So I think that's pretty easy for them to understand.
Mayor, who was the one who designed that? Who designed it?
Uh, several.
Okay, I'm just saying, I just want to be, kudos, it looks good.
Heather primarily put it together, but we sent it around and let everybody review it and made modifications. The Andrews Apartment Development, they are standing walls on that as of today. 231 Seafood is open and doing very well. They're trying to work out a few bugs, but the quantity, quality, and the price of their food is really good for what it is, so we're really excited about that. In front of you is a ballot for the upcoming election that passed out in the meeting last night, so I just brought those to, to share with you. The tennis court grant that we've been working on forever and ever, I just want to share you this with y'all. This is a letter that we received from Director Boswell in November of '22. It says, recommended to the National Park Service for approval. Okay? This is the correspondence that Jackie has had until Jackie passed, and Heather picks it up. This is emails, letters, text messages, it has gone on forever, not text message, emails and, and letters. So today, I've sent that to Director Boswell, asking if he can help us, I'll send it, also send it to Tommy Tubel's office, because it's federal. Uh, it's crazy that it's taken this long. Tennis courts, it was gonna cost six or seven hundred thousands, probably no telling what because of this, this delay in paperwork. Um, had the opportunity, was invited to a meeting today with the hospital board, about two hours long, they have some great plans on the property, uh, where the surgery center is, won't go into a lot of detail yet, but it, it's really a good project for the city of Ozark, and, and the board was very receptive, we had an outside group that presented some of our things to us, and, uh, hope, hope we can pull that off. Y'all don't forget, the Chamber banquet is Thursday night at six PM, the award banquet, uh, and the, you should have received from Colonel McHugh, Warmer Officer, uh, ribbon cutting, open house, Holman House on Friday night at six PM. Just wanted to remind y'all of those two things. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Jackson?
Well, I'd just like to bring, bring some clarity to what was mentioned earlier by Ozzy. The audience noticed, and I know we did, um, on that project, ADA plan for Steedaw, uh, is to be funded outside of city funds. That's one thing, he mentioned that Councilwoman Harlow, and he has been working on it, but they're gonna solicit funds from businesses, uh, the way he proposed that, so it has nothing to do with the city, uh, as far as funding. But in addition to that, I'd like to make a comment. The, if you notice, the mayor had mentioned, uh, a meeting or two ago about, and I've been mentioning it for years, about us looking toward a sports complex for the city. So if we're gonna do the sports complex, it would seem to me that we would make things within that sports complex ADA compliant. Uh, I don't think we should try to duplicate things, you know? Uh, if you, if you make ADA compliant, uh, features in Steedaw, you do it in Open Effort, you do it at Police Memorial Park, then you also are looking to do it in the sports complex. I don't know if we're able to do all that funding. We have businessmen, or businesswomen here in the audience tonight, and I know one in particular that told me, and told fellow councilmen, uh, we, we niggling dime our businesses to death. You know, I mean, everything comes up, you wanna ask business for a donation, well, they can't donate but so much, you know? So I just wanna throw that out, and it's, uh, something that we should take into consideration as we try to, you know, do, do, do such things.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Pearl?
Uh, yes, next Tuesday night, the twenty-seventh, is the Kwanzaa Spud Bank Day Center, uh, it's hard to find the plot, number at Cary Red Center. Um, I've, I've got tickets, if anyone wants to get in with me, uh, I can sell some tickets to it, but it's, it's very delicious, uh, the bacon is the best, I tell you, like, Kwanzaa bacon's the best. And also, just, uh, Carroll High School made a great pie over their new football coach, Matt Malone, he's a young offensive coordinator from, uh, Amolusia, and, uh, he's had a lot of success, worked under a lot of great coaches, leading up to now, and I think he's gonna do a wonderful job with the Eagles here, and I'm looking forward to see, see all his results he, he has, what he puts in with the team.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harlow?
Um, I was asked to announce that Read Across Americas next week, and so if you would like to volunteer reading to a, a school classroom, reach out to, um, Ms. Julie McDaniel. And also, um, I'd just like to make mention of the playground at, at Kids Zone. Um, Ozzy did mention that we were going to solicit businesses for sponsoring, that's in keeping with the spirit of the original Kids Zone, how it was built, with community donations and business sponsorship, piece by piece. Ms. Judah could attest that that playground was built and loved by our community. I don't see why we can't add the improvements under the same spirit, but also, um, apply for grants that are available to us, we've pretty much got this grant writing business down to a neck, the city has a grant writer, so I've already found several grants that we can apply for, and I believe that process has probably already started, so, and this was just a starting point, not to say that we're not going to make, you know, Open Effort or Police Memorial, or, uh, any other playground that the city takes care of, Handicapped Accessible. This is just a starting point, and I wanted to keep it with the spirit of the way that Kids Zone was built, with the community involvement. That's how it got started, it's not to negate any, uh, one park over another.
Thank you. And, uh, I actually don't have any, any announcements today, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, the students from Mill County and, uh, Ozark City Schools on their performance of Singing in the Rain at the Flowers Center, um, that all went on. Yes.
Chili cook-off.
Chili cook-off, I thought they were gonna say that. So yes, the chili cook-off, uh, this Saturday, this Saturday afternoon, what time is it? This weekend? What time? Four?
Well, they'll start cooking in the morning, but then, uh, they'll start tasting at four, and awards at six, I believe.
Okay.
And then there'll be music going on into the evening, yeah.
Cruisin', music, so the, the square will be alive this Saturday. And then, while you're, while you're on your way, go do some spring cleaning, drop off some shoes. And I did see, Mayor, thank you for taking a picture with the box downstairs, so there's a box downstairs, uh, where Principal Shakespeare took, uh, took a picture with the mayor at it, so. With that, I will call this meeting to a close, and we will begin the next meeting in three minutes. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. Led by Councilwoman Jackson, led by Mayor Blenkin.
Heavenly Father, come this evening, and I'm grateful, thank you for your goodness and your mercy. Lieutenant Lovey-Camp, Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our city, our city officials help us to make the right decisions that will benefit the citizens of both sides. We also ask your blessings upon our state and federal officials. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless men and women in war-torn countries that fight for the freedoms that we hold so dear and dear. Thus, these blessings in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic and its citizens, one nation, united by indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will approve the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on February sixth, twenty twenty-four. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held on February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments on, or any comments or discussion on approving these minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to set the agenda with the addition of, uh, number ten for the revocation of business license, and number eleven for executive session for pending litigation.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as amended? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, item number five is a first and second reading application, zero five zero, retail beer, off premises only, and zero seven zero, retail table wine, off premises only. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve the first and second reading application, zero five zero, retail beer off premises only, for, uh, Appleton, Smart one oh one, Inc., Trade Name, D-line one oh one, fourteen twelve, should be over, on the sheet, K. Petec.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on accepting this first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a first reading application, zero four zero, for retail beer on or off premises, and zero six zero, retail table wine on or off premises. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve first reason, zero four zero, retail beer on premises, and zero six zero, retail table wine on premises, for seat two thirty-one seafood house.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I don't believe that's what was requested, though.
It says, it does say on or off in the motion.
Yeah.
So.
It said on or off.
But, but your motion was just on.
Right. Because of controversy.
See, I don't, I don't think that.
So we, we either have to completely shoot it down, or accept it as first.
I think that they accept it as first, and then they'll get them changed up when they come back.
Is that, is this the new place?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
They want it off-premises.
Well, it says on or off.
He kept it now, he was looking.
He said he was looking good.
Well, they, they, and on or off, they can sell beer and wine, they can't sell liquor off-premises, but they can sell liquor, but they can sell beer and wine on premise and to take.
To go?
If, on that particular.
Well, I know, but we don't, do we do that? We're a restaurant? Is that how it's supposed to be?
Joe, it's a, it's a reason for that, it's a favorite, calling in and picking up.
I don't understand why we put it off-premise.
That's fairly unusual for this type of business. I think it's a mistake.
I would, I would just approve this now, and then they'll change it up on the second, right?
The second, where he was gonna look into it.
Yeah.
So do we have to?
This, this would be an unusual request, I think.
Okay, so, so in that case, but what, we can't change the request, we can only shoot down the request, or let the request pass through to get to a second reading?
Because if we shut, shoot it down, then we have to do a whole other first.
We have to do another first.
That would.
Is that correct, am I correct in thinking of that procedure?
And I, I really don't know what their wishes are, so this may be what, what they desire, but, uh, I think they need to explain what their operation's gonna be, you know, Officer Wild.
I do not know at present time, I will find out exactly what is requested.
This is, uh, it, it, fairly typical of barbecue joints, uh, uh, I say barbecue joints, I mean, it's, um, eating places and places that, that you would take beverages à la, but it's only, it's only beer and wine, they cannot do that with liquor. Well, they don't, that do not, apparently, if not required for a restaurant license, which is generally what you would think that they would be applying for.
Well, if you approve it this way, you could downgrade.
That's right, that's what I'm saying. Because that would speed them.
So we would have to, so we have to approve it this round?
Yeah.
And then?
If the application states retail beer and retail table wine, so that excludes the liquor.
Yeah, they, uh, like I said, normally, a, a place like that would, would, uh, request a restaurant license, which meant they could sell all, uh, all beverages.
Okay.
To include liquor.
Now, I misspoke when I said liquor, um, my question was off-premise, they, yeah, they can't, why wouldn't, you know, why? Because you can't drive with the alcohol or the beer or wine in your car, so why would have to do?
I'm not sure. But here's the question, like, for, for, for your business or anybody in the entertainment district, that they have to have on or off, right?
Um.
Yes.
Yes.
All of those people have to have on or off?
We do?
Yeah.
Back in line?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but I take it from, that's not the purposes.
Well, we have the entertainment district, that's what allows them to go out onto the sidewalk on the way.
Let me clarify this, on this particular license, you can go in and you can drink your beer or your wine, okay? When you get ready to leave, you, you can't take that beer and wine, that beer is gone, drink it on premise. When you want to leave, you buy a sealed container, just like you would buy at a convenience store, and you can leave a bottle of wine, but it's a sealed container, and so you can't have it in your, in your vehicle.
And to the application process, so long as they're going within a legal reason and not breaking the law, there's no reason to do it. But we found to withhold.
Right.
And I'll call, see, with the ABC Board, and, and she and I communicate quite a bit, you know, to get the license, and I'll find out if it wasn't a mistake, or if that was intended.
But I think when I go ahead and prove it now, that way it speeds it for me.
So, so Councilman Jackson, would you like to amend your motion, or?
What do you want me to amend it to?
To, to have all.
Well, it's just that you said on or off, yeah.
Okay, I amend the motion to have a first reading application, zero four zero, retail beer on or off premises, and zero six zero, retail wine on or off premises, but two thirty-one seafood owners, zow can china.
Thank you, thank you. And, um, and Councilwoman Harlow, do you second, second? Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this first reading application? All in favor of passing this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any opposed? I briefly blanked, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is to set a public hearing for March fifth, twenty twenty-four at five PM for the reserving of a parcel, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make the motion to set a public hearing for March fifth, twenty twenty-four at five PM for reserving a parcel number two six dash oh six dash oh four, two zero dash three dash zero zero, zero dash zero zero five.
Three.
Oh, three, I'm sorry, I'll read your time. One zero zero six. Okay. Look at it, Warrigal Road, Ozark, Alabama.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is an ordinance, is consideration of an ordinance, don't we need to suspend a little bit of that? Yes, okay, we, uh, so it is for an ordinance, and in order to, uh, act on this ordinance and repeal the other one, we do need to suspend the rules. So what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve an ordinance repealing section five dash one technical codes adopted by reference exclusion, decide disputes of chapter five, article one, and general of the code, ordinance of City of Ozark, Alabama, and replacing said section five dash one technical codes adopted by reference exclusion, decide disputes in its entirety.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have to, so we have to re-suspend it. Okay, so item number nine, the request for use to reserve funds, we do need to suspend the rules again on that. So what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is to request free use of the reserve funds for additional costs for the improvements to the Ozark Civic Center. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the request for use of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reserve funds for additional costs of improvement to the Ozark Civic Center.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is to request free use of the reserve funds for additional costs for the improvements to the Ozark Civic Center. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the request for use of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reserve funds for additional costs of improvement to the Ozark Civic Center.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is consideration of revocation of a business license. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we revoke the business license of smoking, bums, barbecue.
Thank you. We just, okay, I mean, you can name it, you can word it out. Well, I mean, I feel like it's justified. We've been dealing with it for three years.
Technically, it's not revoked because he never renewed his business license. So he's actually still operating without business license. So I just said we did not have to renew.
Oh, okay, so I move, don't you worry.
Yeah, I just said it accurately.
Um, so I move that we deny that we renew all of the business licenses to smoking, bums, barbecue.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on the non, the denial of a business license to smoke and bums barbecue? I guess my only question is, how do we notify him of that?
I can just write him the letter and send it to him later.
Just make sure he knows, okay? Thanks. Okay, so all in favor of the denial of the business license for smoking bums barbecue, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we're requesting to move into executive session for pending litigation. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to move into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I will request that our attorney and our court go into executive session with us. So at this time, what are the wishes of the council? Sorry, all in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this point, we will move to executive session and then we will come back into review. I suspect any additional business to be conducted.